So the first thing on our agenda tonight is. The. Public hearing.
Pledge of Allegiance.
Appropriations to the fiscal year twenty twenty-two, twenty-three budget. In the amount of one hundred twelve thousand eight hundred fifty-one dollars. Pursuant to RSA one ninety-seven, column, column three, dash A. And then we'll have the pledge of allegiance at the beginning of our. We'll try to follow this. Okay, so we have a public hearing tonight on. Whether to. Or or to receive input on the accepting of or our plans to hold a special public meeting in October. To accept an additional one hundred twelve thousand eight hundred fifty-one dollars. For revenue. So. Procedure, do we have any public Nick?
Yes, we currently have four people on the live stream.
Okay.
I know that one of them is Carrie Broder. I believe she's here to help out with any questions.
Yeah, Carrie Broder is here to help with any questions during the public hearing and also for the beginning of. The board meeting when you talk about a fairly large transfer. So if any questions are. I would be before any comment and so forth. It would be fine if I gave just a brief presentation, I believe it's linked there. So the public hearing today is on the extraordinary need grant Senate Bill four twenty was passed. Signed into effect on July first, two thousand twenty-two, back to the same day. We were recently notified, but many of the districts across the state who qualify for this extraordinary need grant were notified in the last several weeks. And we talked a little bit about it at the last board meeting that we had. But we found out a little bit more information since then. Basically, this extraordinary needs grant is in addition to adequacy. I believe this is going to be an annual conversation, but for now, we're just talking about this year. It's if we were to. Utilize this money, the board would have to lead to accept that and needs to be also voted upon. But the what we would have to do is this money is actually to be only used for educational improvement. The. The amount of money of one hundred twelve thousand eight hundred fifty-one dollars. Is based upon. The school districts demonstrating of that need, the need is is based on family income, bringing me this lunch and so forth. And if accepted, the. The district would have to develop a plan. This plan, the Department of Education has already sent us templates of what we would need to complete. It would be a plan of using that money in ways that are believed to. Help learners in our district achieve higher in math and literacy. Both from a proficiency standpoint and a growth standpoint. And so. What I would say is if we were to go to the next slide, Nick. The district is operating. On a default budget. During a year of high inflation, unexpected costs, unforeseen costs, we have a long year to go. And as we will see later on this evening, we're going to be moving a lot of hopefully moving a lot of budget lines around. To be able to take some of the money that we freed up through reduction of about seven staff positions to be able to go. Into other areas that we've identified as needing to be funded. And we still have more of that to do throughout the course of this year. This is going to be a tough year and one that we're going to have to be very careful to follow our budgets and and look for those funds to be able to continue to. Provide the education we need as well as the making sure that we're paying our bills. And so this money right here, one hundred twelve thousand would be very helpful for us to be able to just take that money and. Set it aside, it would be untouched by facilities, untouched by other departments, untouched by technology, anything of that nature. For the sole purpose of implementing the items that we're already doing or wanting to do, but we can do it in a more purposeful and. More efficient manner by using this money rather than trying to find money here and there throughout the course of a year to fill curriculum budget lines and so forth, to be able to try to. Get professional development going and also. You know, to to pay teachers, for instance, to come after school perhaps and and work on analyzing data and being able to implement strategies within the classroom and as their professional learning communities, which is really the concept of what we want to do. So if we go to the next one. You know, this talks a little bit about how we would use the money. We first of all consult the district's multi-year plan that's on the agenda for tonight to accept. There were some adjustments that we have made from a stylistic standpoint or a grammar standpoint in that plan. That will be going forward tonight, then make sure we choose the activities that are going to really focus on ELA and math growth. We have some evidence. That there are some strategies we've implemented last year, for instance, that have resulted in pockets of of actually fairly significant growth. And so we'd like to continue to. Push those efforts and make sure that. We solidify them not just within the schools but across the entire district, including the SAU to make sure that our processes and practices are firm for years to come. And don't just go by the wayside. A lot of this would have to do with professional learning communities continuing to strengthen our distributed leadership approach. And to all of it really comes together to building that culture of inquiry where we are continuously looking at data, talking about student learning and then making those adjustments. There are some other items that we'll talk tonight about in the super attention report that are going to help us to do that as well that are free. But this is definitely, I mean, we're talking multi-year and we can, we can probably do some things a little bit faster. But the beautiful part of having this money, which we did not expect to have, is that it provides us an avenue to move forward without trying to figure out where. In our current budget, we're going to be able to get money to. Pay for certain things that we'd like to do. I'd rather not have to hold off another year for us to progress. In the way I think we can.
Are there any questions? So we're gonna, if I understand you. These interventions are things that. We're trying to do right now, the plan to do. But this way we'll have a dedicated source of funding towards them. And we'll have to be pulling money from other sources too.
It's a guaranteed source of funding. I won't be looking around all over the place to find the funds to be able to implement what we want to be doing. And we can stay on track and maybe get a little bit further ahead, actually, is kind of the the idea. One of these ideas is to make sure we've been talking about the curriculum instruction assessment team for. Several years trying to get it to be a team of educators throughout the entire organization. We've been. Trying a few models out. We think we have the model that we want to move forward with, which is an extension of the PLC model at each grade level or at each. Subject level, if you're talking about the high school and making sure that we we got to build that out a little bit more, but then use the same processes. All the way up to the inquiry team, which is what we've been trying to implement at the district level so that at every. Facet of the organization, we're looking at how our school is doing in the areas of academia. Growth, so district-wide patterns, school-wide patterns, classroom patterns, individual child patterns, that's the whole system we're trying to develop. And when we do that, well, I mean, if we we showed that example of the third grade team who. I I mean, I now have all their processes and in that were sent to me. They and last year they implemented their these practices pretty strongly throughout the inconsistently throughout the course of the year. The previous third grade class had fifty percent proficiency and their class had eighty-five percent proficiency. And so those things, I know you're not, you know, comparing the same cohort. But you are talking about the same content and instruction and practices. And when those practices were shifted. Things changed. That also included, and this is of significance, and significance to this planning that we would have to do. Is narrowing the gap between individuals who are what we call subgroups. We don't have many subgroups within our district except for maybe being something of special education. And then about three quarters of our students in that class in third grade also were proficient or in special education, who had IUDs and so forth. That shows that those practices have promise and we want to continue on with those throughout the entire. System, which we plan to do, but let's do it with while people are excited about doing it, want to move forward. Do it right the first time rather than.
Momentum.
Yeah, momentum is important. And this would allow for that to take place with some planning, of course.
Well, yeah, the. Primary goal of the brand is to improve student achievement and to help the school district to have funding for successful best practice student learning approaches. And also, as you said, we've got to have a. Accountability progress report that includes evidence of satisfactory program application and progress towards grand accountability improvement targets. Now, if you look at the. Multi-year plan. Which I reviewed, you'll find that what this does is it provides some funding for us to implement some of the things that we've already put in place as plans. And so by having the funding to implement this, it will put less stress on. Other factors, other facets of the district in terms of. Our default budget and strengths that we have. So this would be very beneficial to make sure that we do get our multi-year plan implemented because we'll have a lot of additional funding to do that.
Excellent. Thank you. Shall we see if there are any comments from the public?
Yeah, of course. So this is Nicholas Handy, Communications Coordinator, School Board Secretary. We don't have a physical audience, obviously, no, nobody that could speak publicly here, but we have a couple of people on the live. Stream. We just get the. Policy. So this is just the policy relative to making public comments. Anybody who would like to make a public comment, as long as they're following this policy is free to do so. Since it is an all remote audience, we can address you by having you use the hand raise feature at the bottom of your screen. So you press that button, we get a little wave on my end, and then I can allow you to speak. Oh, no, we're giving people a chance. Another thing is if you're going to make a public comment, I need first name, last name, and town of residence. In order to properly record you as a part of the record. All right, not seeing anybody at this time. How much time would we like to give the digital audience to? Potentially comment.
I think given that there are a limited number of people on. Online, and if we don't have anybody raising their hand now. I think that we should proceed.
Okay.
So do we put this to a vote for the meeting or is this in the meeting? This is now, I I guess we'll vote to go ahead with the. Public meeting. All right, I think we do that now, but well, we close the public hearing and then we.
Typically, that's how we do it. As we close the public hearing, then you make the motion in the school board session.
Okay. So when the school session, you're right.
You take a motion to end the hearing?
Right, right.
Okay, I'll make a motion to end the hearing.
To close the public.
Close the public hearing.
Okay. Thank you, Kim. And do you have a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, thank you, Christine. All right, so we'll close the public hearing on that. Oh, well, all those, they signify by saying hi.
Hi.
Hi. Okay, so that carries six zero. All right, so the hearing is closed and now it's time for us to open our. School board meeting. So public session called to order, let's all say the sacred words of allegiance. Pledge of Allegiance, in turn the flag of the United States of America. In the new republic, for which it stands, one nation under God, in this world with a read and justice for all. Okay, changes to the agenda. Does anybody have changes that they need to? Make at this time? Um, I will ask you, should we do this? Should we vote on the? Public meeting? Now, I don't know if we have a place on the agenda for that, do we?
I think now there is not.
You could, you could ask, you could ask for a motion or you could do it during board matters later on. Carrie is here in case there were any questions about anything. So doing it earlier would be better than later. But Charlie, you had something to say?
Yeah, I heard zoning boards, planning boards. And typically, when we have a public hearing, the purpose is to gather public input on something we're considering. And we close the public room, but then we take our vote. Close the public room, and then we move on to whatever else. So getting the procedural of the matter, maybe in the future we can. Take our vote before we go back.
Before we close the hearing.
Correct.
Okay, thank you. All right, so in light of that, I think.
I think now is appropriate time as any, just take a. Take a motion and make a vote.
All right, so we'll have a motion and discussion and then we'll get this taken care of. So do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion that we. Schedule a. Special. School district meeting for October third in RMS, is that correct?
So it's an actual election?
This would be similar to a deliberative session.
And we can't do it on the third, and the supervisor with a checklist need fourteen days to post. And we have to hold a meeting the Saturday before, so six to thirteen days before. So there's just no time for us to to do that for each of the towns.
Okay, so so then I would say that we. Give the superintendent an action to determine appropriate time and venue for a. District special meeting. Does that make sense?
Can I ask a question to Carrie?
Sure.
So this will be, this message to Carrie would be, is there a deadline we need to do this by? I'm pretty certain there's a timeframe, there's one of them. I know that Jeffrey, I'll be able to check with Jeffrey. October was good. He were rentless all the time.
Jeffrey with the superficial checklist to the town.
With the town we checked.
Right, so the town was good too, and then they tapped to the supervisor, the checklist that's legal, and I grabbed my old manual, three places, we can't do that.
Okay, okay, that's that's fine. So if we could just find out and carry what the window is, that would be all. Just so that we all have an idea of timeframes. Maybe it can be the next four meeting, Monday, for instance.
That would be the third, but Carrie is available now. If you'd like to speak to that, Carrie.
Yes, I'm on, and actually I had thought that the supervisors of the checklist had been spoken to and that October third was a date that would work. So. I will need to follow up with legal counsel to see if there's. A date that it it has to be done beforehand. I would assume as soon as possible in October. I'm just not sure how far because they're not going to be setting the tax rates until after the special meeting is held.
So. Do you, do you, and do you think? That, for instance, the fourteen days after the third is a seventeenth, right? So that's our next board meeting after the third, I think. Is is that likely to be a reasonable time? For the purpose of setting tax rates?
Well, it does. I believe it will be reasonable. I I know that the towns. Are trying to get everything done as soon as possible in October, so I hate to delay it. Too long for them, but I'll call legal counsel first thing in the morning.
Okay. Nick?
This is Nick Handy again. Based on conversations that I had with the district clerk. The supervisor of the checklist and Jeffrey, just for clarification for Carrie's purpose, they were reached out to and they had successfully reached back. We had heard back from the Jeffrey supervisors of the checklist. They had, they didn't indicate what Lisa had said as being a potential concern. And we also had heard from Bob Shaman, who had, who's the district moderator, and he said it was okay. Our district clerk had just heard from the town of Ridge today after trying to reach out a couple of times. It sounds like, I don't know, maybe Charlie could correct it wrong. It sounds like the new town administrator might have just started today or very recently.
Today.
Okay, so there was some, there were some attempts to reach out on the Ridge side and there was some. Errors, what errors, there were some. Struggles to communicate and then it was remembered today that one of our school board members that's on the bridge supervising, so. But yeah, we we'd heard from the Jeffrey side. We had not yet heard from the Ridge side.
Okay, so I apologize. I didn't follow up the legal counsel because I thought we were all set for the third, so I'll just have to. I'll have to make sure that the seventeenth isn't pushing it out too far.
Okay, thank you, Karen. And you'll let us know and we'll act accordingly.
So is your motion to have the meeting on the seventeenth?
No, my motion would authorize a superintendent to establish the date and the venue for the district special meeting.
I'll second it. Or did somebody else try to do that? I'll second that.
Okay, thank you, Charlie. Thank you, Paul. Is there any discussion? Just want to ask about the question you raised earlier about the location. For the public meeting. I understand, special meeting, sorry. Did you have any, you know, further thoughts on that? Or should we leave that to the superintendent?
I think that's up to superintendent, moderator, whoever.
Okay.
Normally, it's the selectmen that determine the venue. So in this particular case.
Our hands are a little bit forced with that October third date because the Pratt was being used by the volleyball team for a varsity game. We only have one location that we could hold a home game being the Pratt because we have the equipment in there. So that's why Bridge was brought up as the. Location for the third. If we're moving that, it could open up further venue options, so.
We normally hold it deliberate and range anyway. So we know we can hold it there.
Yeah, yes, that's the likely location.
Okay, good. All right then, so then all those in favor of the motion? Signified by saying aye.
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 Aye. Okay, so that carries six zeros there. All right, very good.
And we, that we. Supervisors are able to. Do something.
That gives us the leeway, like if we would have to post it tonight and and post it in the newspaper, like we we have, there's, I don't understand how they could have said that they were all set because. I went, I scoured it today, you know, that's what Carla called me at three and I scoured it. I was thirsty response. There's specific timelines we have to go by, and it has to be the fourteen days, it has to be six days before, you know, that, you know, that we need. There's, I don't see how Jeffrey says he could do it. I see no options, sorry. I know one of that, I want to hear it too.
Okay, so. We already covered changes to the agenda. I believe, I don't think we have any tonight. And then we have live district calendar. Followed by public comments one. So for live district calendar.
Yeah, this was a request to the board to have that up on there. I'm happy to, you know, pop it up on the. Screen. We are currently, or I guess I should say, I am currently working with the schools to make sure that they're fully updating these. That with each school and we're going to have monthly meetings to make sure that there's another communication topics are adhered to. Again, you can find this by going to the main district website, fourth links, calendar, live district calendar. You can also find it on our mobile app. You're free to, there's some ability to share these feeds, to subscribe to additions. Most of the things deal with, you know, some of those early start of the school year things, book fairs. Picture days, we have one here at the start of the school year, the RMS and GGS picture days will be on the twenty-sixth, which is next Monday. JGS is going to be visiting the, is going to have the curiosity queue coming to Jeffrey, so there should be a visit for there. We have a homecoming for middle high school on the first. Construction career day. But again, if you click into these individual entries, you can get more information. For example, construction career day shows you the flyer and permission slip for the kids that are interested in signing up.
Was it pertains to places or or timeframes that the board might like to have representation? The twenty-ninth. The sixth of September and the thirteenth of September are of significance in that RMS. Has its typical book fair combined.
You mean October, September gone?
There, I, did I say?
Yeah, you said September.
So I meant September to October, sorry. So September, the end of September on the twenty-ninth is an RMS open house. Five thirty-seven, I think. And then that following Thursday is the CHS JRMS open house. That's here. And then the following Thursday after that is Jeffrey Grade School Open House. And. There is also. More or less simultaneously a fall concert scheduled for this school for part of that time. And then homecoming on Saturday is sometimes the nicest thing for, you know, I think someone will show up because there are children in playing athletics and so forth, so we'll be there anyway naturally. But that's, those are the. Community items that are there.
I don't know if it's the same on the computers. I didn't see it when you did it, but when I do it on my phone, it's so easy because you can just push add to calendar and it goes right directly to your. Calendar or phone. It's so easy to use.
But if you, like I said, if you got download the mobile app, there you can even pick individual schools. So if you want to filter out certain schools and only get access to certain things, you'd get that. With the SAU calendar, I mean, again, as you can see, everything's color-coded. Anything on the SAU calendar is going to apply to multiple schools. So you know, our first yearly release date coming up on October fifth. All your school board meetings. Gray is going to be all your standard holidays, so. You need their access to the website. You need their access to the website. You can download it to your calendar app of your choice. You can use the mobile app. There's multiple ways that you guys can. Pull this information in your phone, so you can be continually updated as well.
What's the name of the app, the mobile app?
Uh, just, it should just be the JR CSD.
JR CSD.
Get searched out and um. You know, Apple Store, Google Play Store. Should be right up in there.
It's so.
Yeah, just JR CSD.
Alright, I think it's great. To review this every board meeting.
I like it.
Yeah.
Alright, very good. I think we're ready for public comments uh session number one.
Great, so the uh policy should be back up on the screen. Um, again, just feel free to make sure you're familiar with that before we um have anybody commenting. Uh, we did recently change it, uh, you can see that update, you know, right here on the approval date. Uh, it just was, it might be state requirement for uh. Giving people enough time to speak. So if anybody would like to speak, just press that button, walk over your screen. To raise your hand, I'll go to you first last day of town residents and you can uh make a public comment. Alright, I'm not seeing anybody right now. Uh, we do have a second session toward the end of the meeting.
Okay, very good. Thank you, Nick. So uh. I suppose it's nice for us, those of us on the school where don't have a. Item generates a lot of discussion, we can move forward. More quickly. Seems like there's always plenty to do, so. We'll move on to uh the superintendent's report. Yes, thank you. I'm happy to announce that we will at our next board meeting have a student representative to the school board. Um, Amrielle Lucier has been elected or to that role. Uh, Amrielle, you may have seen her uh around in school, some of you know her, you're um. She plays, I think, on the basketball team. She also actually works part-time in the district as well, um, helping us out, doing a great job. Um, so she's uh, I did see her today, asked her, would you like to come on over? She's like, oh, you know, start when I'm supposed to. So uh she'll come on October third. So that's really great. Secondly, uh, we are, I'm just updating you on something I've already. Told you about which is some grant opportunities. We're still uh in the running for whatever grants we. Have put forward with, like you can say, college behavioral health improvement institute. Yeah, for MTSSB, we've had an update that we probably um will, it'll be late fall, maybe early winter by the time we find out whether we. Uh, are awarded that or not in. So we're still, we can hear back for that. We did, however, hear back uh for the. Safety grant award. We did a grant application for each school, so four different applications. We were awarded in the first round, there are two rounds of grants for uh. Safety totaling about, both of them about thirteen million, a little over thirteen million dollars. So the first one, which was about three to four million dollars, we were able to have the JRMS and CHS. Uh, activities funded that will be put into our grant management system, the. New Hampshire Department of Education uh site that I have, my NHDOE. And when that happens, we'll start that process. We've already had meetings as that move forward, have sample write-ups for the grant so that we can get moving and. Um, schedule the work. We do have more time than I had thought to do the work, which is nice. Uh, to, I think, next December as opposed to this summer, maybe even the December after, if I had to check my notes, whether it's twenty-four or whether it's. December twenty-three, but it's not this December, which is nice. Um, so a lot of safety elements that we had put together for, from. Uh, our meeting with the police, the fire and safety from the towns. The second round, which we hope we will have a Jade Chapel grade school and RMS grants awarded to us. Uh, we're holding out. They are very similar in what we wrote in all of them, uh, trying to be consistent across the board. There's a little more money that we're asking for, for the elementary schools, because just by the nature of the schools um. Being positioned the way they are with doors and so forth. Um, and some of the work that we have to do there with cameras and doors, just there's a little. More work that would need to be done, which makes it cost a little bit sound and so forth as well for the intercom systems. Um, and we'll find out in October is my understanding. The next item there is just an update on one of the items that we're implementing, our learning management system Otis, so we're. Uh, having a fairly large implementation here this year with our middle school and high school. The majority of faculty uh are. Fully implementing that this year. There is one department that's partially implementing. And there was a session on September fifth. Where we have an online invitation out there, Otis representative answered questions and so forth. There are about twenty people on that, which was actually very good. We were told they really only ever had three or four people on their um. Their sessions online and they have this many, they were pretty pleased. That now is on our district's Facebook page, that was posted there tonight, but also is what is really on middle high school. Site, so it was recorded and it's for, along with all the, you know, other ones that we're trying, all the communication on grading and. Uh, Otis and and so forth, all of that is going on a space where people can go and review and review again if they need to. So if there's any questions, oh, I wasn't able to make that. I know that there were some people called up and said they tried to get on to this. Original event, but they were at athletic events and they're, you know, they didn't have the bandwidth, I guess. To be able to get on, so um to be able to keep, you know, provide that. Is good and mixed up a great job, making sure that that's all up and running. And then uh another item that we are actually attaching to Otis, so it's gonna work for us by being part. Connected to our learning management system is that the New Hampshire Department of Education has contracted. With tutor.com, they're affiliated with Princeton Review. So if you actually saw their emblem, it would be Princeton Review, tutor.com. Um, Princeton Review is, of course, it's been around for a long time, uh, with people, most people understand that, associate that with. The SAT and so forth, which of course is part of this, um, and tutor.com is a company that's about twenty-five years old. And so basically, uh, every learner in the state of New Hampshire is. Going to have access one way or another, whether the school chooses to. Work with the state on providing it to families or whether families just want to do this on their own, uh, it's gonna be up to each district. This, we've chosen after having a session with tutor.com last week and then another one today. Uh, we've decided that we're very pleased with the products and their safety measures and. Um, just the, the opportunities that is provided is pretty impressive. Uh, we're excited about this, free tutoring twenty-four hours a day, any subject area that you're talking about, seven days a week. Individuals who, for instance. Are playing sports and they go leave school right after school to go to their practices, they have a game. They come home, they're like, oh, I still don't understand how to do this. At nine o'clock at night, parents are like, I don't understand it anymore because. Math was not done that way when I was, you know, your age, whatever. Oh, okay, well, let me go over here and press this button in two minutes. I'll have a tutor there. Who is going to be able to chat with me or voice communicate or both with me during that timeframe with whiteboards. That can show me how to do all these sorts of things, um, supports that if you have some, oh, I need to turn a paper in in a couple of days. They have a, I'm gonna um throw in my, my writing sample into them, get feedback on that and they'll do that within six to twelve hours. Um, we can utilize it during the school day. We just have to tell tutor.com ahead of time that we're gonna have a whole classroom or partial classroom or. Multiple days of classrooms utilizing their skill sets so that they have the tutors readily available so that they can jump right on to do that. Um, it was, it's just a really neat. Platform and process that they have. And uh we spent, probably we spent an hour with them today, talking and answering questions. Most of my questions were around against safety. Uh, and they've, they've got some great processes there. And then uh our sessions before, when we were actually deciding whether we wanted even start to move forward. Uh, was with the, the entire administration came down to my office. We had a conference call right then and there. They answered the phone immediately and just spent. Over an hour with us answering all the questions that we had had, so. We'll have more communication and press on that. Some of that press is gonna start on Wednesday. When a, the actual Department of Education um press conference on this to the state. Um, it might be televised, it might just be in the paper. I don't know how that's gonna roll. You might know better. I'm not entirely sure. Is coming here. They're holding a press conference here at our school. So at nine. O'clock, nine to nine thirty-ish in the morning on Wednesday, uh, the commissioner will be here. He'll lead off. The governor may or may not be here. We don't know that he's, he's set to be at the airport at ten o'clock for another. Um. Press conference, and so they thought this was a good back-to-back type of situation for, for them and then the representative from tutor.com. And then the principal. Guidance and myself are slated to say a few words as well uh at this press conference, and so we're meeting tomorrow to decide. Who's going to say what, you know, um, I think that I'll likely focus on the district strategic design. This focuses on personalizing, actually, this is customizing. Learning, it, it's, it's twenty, it's learning anytime, anyway, and they have a great system for helping support kids with uh who learn differently. Couple of different languages for all those people who. Need, who wants to speak Spanish and they're trying to, you know, I put another couple of languages in there as well uh for tutoring purposes. So we're excited about that. I think that in talking with superintendents around the state, some people um are more excited than others. Some people are hesitant. Uh, to perhaps go, you know, with anything, it's uh jumping on board with this can be. The unknown, we've just, we're comfortable out there spending a couple of hours. With the people at tutor.com, that this is gonna be a good product for us. We see very few, if any. Down, downsides of this.
Can I just ask, you, you mentioned when you were describing this, then one of the concerns you were looking at was safety? What, what are the safety issues?
Well, online safety, right? So you're talking about an individual adult somewhere that you don't know that you haven't vetted.
At one o'clock in the morning.
Yeah, or at one o'clock, two o'clock in the morning, right, connecting with uh some of your kids. Um. They have processes in place. The process, basically, if there's ever any conversation about, for instance, even where a person lives. Because they don't know where you live, what state you're from, they don't know your last name, anything of that, none of that's ever supposed to be known. Uh, any sort of conversation, the tutor, the processes, the tutor is to uh say, this is not something that we can talk about, we need to, you know, move along to something else. If it continues on, they shut the process off immediately. All transcripts of the sessions are all recorded. Um, and I, meaning uh, it's so, and actually is available if we so desire. Um, to have them as well. Uh, obviously, that we don't want to have to monitor all of that, you know, that's, I think, where. Um, some people hearing that could be like, oh, that's just one more thing we need to do. I don't think we need to do that. They've got some great protocols in place. They have, you know, over a hundred thousand people who apply to their program. They have about two to three thousand individuals working for them. Uh, so, you know, not two percent of the people who apply make, make the cut. Um, and like I said, they, they have supervisors and layers of support over there. The, the state department was very happy with. The privacy process and so, um, I would say by talking to them, you know, we were too.
So, so this is not strictly a New Hampshire program?
This, oh, this is national, yeah, that schools all, all over the place are using them.
Okay.
Uh, Fairfax County, Virginia, I believe is one, LA, Los Angeles Public School System, we're small comparatively speaking. So, yeah, this is used all over the place. It's just now free to us because they had some funds and we decided to move forward. I have, I think it was a good. Likely to be a very good use of the, of the federal funds that they have.
What are the limitations I could ask on how much use of students?
Zero limitations. The only limitation is if we have teachers who want to utilize this during a school day within their classroom. If they have more than twenty individuals at a time. That need to be tutored, they need to fill out a survey or question here, I guess. Um, one to two days, probably two days or more in advance to let them know. The date and time that they're gonna wanna have that type of service. So for instance, a teacher, how they could use it at classroom. Would be. Alright, I, I, I teach a class, uh, okay, we're gonna split off into different groups. You're gonna be working on this, you're working on this, you're having difficulty over here. You can actually have a, a area where there are kids just getting tutored. On their individual needs. Um, during a timeframe from three other individual tutors. Sim, you know, simultaneously. Sometimes it'll be short. If they find that this tutoring sessions are really long because. If the content that they're trying to learn, they've had, the tutor has had to teach other concepts. So that they could even get to that. They'll get, they'll let, they'll let the school know, um, through, there's a process of that for that to take place. It takes a bit of time, but. There will be communication.
Having three extra professionals.
They. To some degree, yeah, there, there's, yeah, but these are certified individuals, you know, certified, I think, in the state of. Let's say California is the um. I, I'd have to reread the, the documents, the privacy documents and so forth and their requirements, but certified to in, in at least one state. Um, I'm sure it's not certified in every state, in every state. The uh, you, you were, question was, I'm sorry.
But special needs.
They discussed that today, uh, and indicated that they, their individuals are trained to work with a variety of. Um, needs and so they have uh other supports. Let's see what I wrote down. Specifically just about that today. They said we, you know, work with students who have different learning challenges, learning disabilities, English language learning, um. With their reading, their writing, their spelling, help them with time management, they'll tutor on time management, assignment. Uh, chunkings to make a big assignment into smaller assignments, work with them on scheduling. Uh, they can connect by voice or chat, so you can do or both. So most of it's by chat, back and forth. Uh, but you can do that. They have a um, a wide array of tools on their whiteboard, shapes, visuals. Um, screen readers, things of that nature. So there are a lot of technological tools that they have at their disposal that can help. To work with individuals with learning, uh, some learning challenges. Most people who are needing tutoring, regardless of whether they have a disability or not, you know, have some learning challenges and usually is for very similar reasons. Yep.
So we're, well, we have a tutorial session on you, using tutoring.com, so students, the learners are comfortable with how to access it. They'll actually access it.
Yeah, I, I think that we're gonna, I mean, we'll have to talk about the process of rolling it out. It. The students will have no issue with, you know, you press the button, you go in there, you type a couple of things. This is what I need to be getting help with. And then two minutes later and you've got someone administer the process, that's really what it is. Um, but I think. For, for the school standpoint, like how teachers would use it, they would need to have. A little bit more of a tour, the system of what could be used, you know, SAT prep. There are some schools, they say that actually create uh credit bearing classes, like half, half a credit or whatever. There are some schools, they say that actually create, uh, credit bearing classes, like half, half a credit or whatever. And just in SAT prep because they have, um, a whole Princeton review, of course, has an entire um, set of modules that kids can go through. Um, but what they will do is they'll pre-assess and then post-assess and all that kind of stuff as well. And you go in, you take a pre-assessment on, um, the SAT, you know, one of their twenty assessments that they have on that. It will then give you data. Uh, write backs and these are the three areas that you need to work on the most. Here are the modules that you can go to to work on those areas. So along with Otis, which is also giving kids, once the teachers are really putting in the, um, information fast. People, they're, the learners are getting data in real time. And so they're able to see and react to it right then and there. They're not waiting a day. They're not waiting two days. They're, they're it's, it's fairly quick. It's almost instantaneous in some ways, yes.
Well, you just shared earlier with me that they, uh, already sent us a whole list of resources for, uh, potential ways that we can help all this out to, you know, staff, teacher, you know, staff, uh, students, parents, et cetera. So, uh, we gotta go through some of those resources to see how we can best, you know, kind of give it to people so that they can, uh, know how things are going. But we already, we already have some of those resources to potentially be able to promote.
Yeah, they provided a bunch to your, to your question. I just have
Yes, I can see like in junior or senior block having those, you know, should be an advertisement. I mean, really just something to make sure that kids know that this is accessible and it's free and
Oh, we'll be definitely advertising that.
But to make sure that they don't access it during test times.
Um, so it, it is very mobile compatible apparently, but it says it's accessed through Canvas and now we're using Otis. What is the compatibility here? It says it it is Chromebook accessible. When you just mentioned the higher math and stuff, there's a lot of I know it's Vlex, it's all the time you have to download different software to be able to access the tools, the graphing things. So apparently this is Chromebook accessible for, for some things, but it also says that it, you know, that you access it through Canvas. So what are the compromises we're making then? This is their digital toolkit.
Yeah, so the state went and offered Canvas as the learning management system that, that would be free for kind of like this, but for, for our own, uh, sort of the state. Um, Canvas doesn't, unlike this, Canvas doesn't fit our, um, strategic design. Um, it's a good tool. It's a tool that if you're not, if you, you know, if you're not looking to personalize learning and uh, customize where you can and, and to do a lot more with data and so forth, Canvas is a great tool, certainly to have it rather than not have it would be good. So a lot of places did, you know, choose to do that and they have a partnership with Canvas. So tutor dot com has a partnership with a couple of different out learning management systems. They do not have a partnership with Otis. So what we've had them do is they've had to connect with Otis to find a location on Otis that they can put a button basically for the kids. And so that's their process. So it's taken a little more work. It, whereas I believe the learning management system, anyone who has Canvas works probably has it. Okay, just easy, you know, saying we wanna have this loaded right up on your system. Yeah, we're, we're excited about it. I think, uh, you know, at some point during the education committee, I'm sure that that will be a topic.
Uh, Ruben, on Wednesday, uh, our board members, you know, welcome to attending.
Yeah, anyone can come. It's, uh, you know, the early eight forty-five or so, um, good. And then I think we're meeting in music run across the way. So that's where that's gonna be.
Yes, Wednesday morning.
But you, yeah, should, should you choose to want to attend.
The commissioner will be here and I guess he'll be speaking and
Yeah, uh, you know, the, the majority of speakers are gonna, I'm sure is we don't have a long time. And if the commissioner's gonna speak, the individual that they send from tutor dot com, they didn't give me the name. I just, I don't have it right now. So the representative that they have. And then, um, Mr. Dustin is Baker and myself will say a few words here and there from different perspectives and points of view. And, um, so that will be the official launching of it in the state of Maine. Sure. There are already, I mean, there are half a dozen to maybe, actually, I think oh, about a time today, we're all around, there already have a couple dozen. But when we had started to sign off, I think there had been a half a dozen individuals kind of already get ahead of the game on it. So we were, we're coming on early, early adopters, but we're by no means the first.
Maybe the governor will be here. As long as it's gonna be in town, it sounds suspicious. Yeah, no, in a good way.
Yeah, yeah, might, might be here. There's some sort of press conference over at the
Uh, there's a executive council meeting at ten o'clock at the Jaffrey Airport.
Okay.
Um, I was told that we might be able to know by tomorrow at some point whether or not the governor could be there. Something tonight for that, with different options for different time slots. But yes, it's, it'll be from nine to nine thirty, music grown, um, presses invited, just, you know, be there. They've already been invited out today. That media advisory went out. Uh, so hopefully we get some people to come, uh, but then, you know, as Ruben said, if you guys wanna, you know, um, feel free, um, and then we'll, I'll be there to, you know, try to put together our promotional materials. We can push this out after. But they'll also, um, do a press release that they sent out to everybody, um, in addition to whoever does whatever, you know, whatever reporters are here, so.
Then, you know, another news, just to sum this up, our we were able to finally finalize the MOU or MOA. I think it's really probably called it a memory of agreement with uh, Franklin Pierce University for their education program there. Um, so uh, that's in the works. The process is already in the works. Some other side elements that, uh, were taking place that were you know, we're continuing to actually expand the partnership already in Dover MOUs, but I think Nick, you posted last Friday or Thursday, that picture of the undergrad team going over to RMS. Got like a hundred thirty likes on our site and so forth. So people are entrusted in that and it was really nice. We wanna have more of that type of partnership with the school system over there. So, uh, this is exciting. You, you, Nick, put out the press release today to a variety of news outlets. Uh, we'll see if anyone will pick it up or call us up or anything like that. We do know that, just like every other profession, uh, some of our contacts no longer work at these places anymore, um, which is so we're not dealing with the same people we dealt with four months ago. Uh, because you're taking different giants and so forth. So we'll see how that rolls out and, um, we'll just keep on moving there. But that was the efforts to get the joint. I gotta commend Nick. Cause this was not a particularly easy, um, thing to do, nor have we really done anything like this. We did a joint press release with the college, which we felt was good to do. But when you do a joint press release, there's a lot of going back and forth. Even to even the logo that we use was gonna be important, so. It was, it was an interest, it was an interesting process and I hope that our learning purpose will faster or I, or that we don't have as much of a learning in the future.
If there are more questions. We'll move on to the, uh, consent agenda. Thank you for those updates. So, uh, before we have any discussion on the consent agenda, do we have a, does someone wanna make a motion?
May I commission that we accept the consent agenda?
Okay, thank you, Lisa. Uh, do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, thank you, Christine. Um, discussion.
Yes, I had a question on the, um, transfer, special ed transfer ninety-two thousand six point three. And the question, Carrie's on the line, the question was relative to, are those four uh, positions that were replaced by, um, contractors?
I'm sorry, what was the question, Charlie?
The question, there are, uh, four positions that, uh, the fund, the transfers of funding for special ed with ninety-two thousand. There are four positions that, uh, that funding is coming from. And I just wanted to verify that those are four positions that were eliminated and replaced by, in other words, you're not gonna hire people, we're gonna use, uh, contracted services.
That's correct.
Okay, thank you, Carrie. Are there any other, uh, questions? Carrie, um, obviously the, um, budget transfers are, are large. Can you just give us a brief summary of, uh, what we have here, what, why, you know, we're doing this at this time and this way? I mean, we're, we're aware that this has to do with the budget, uh, the default budget and your effort to make this work, but I'm just wondering if you just give us a little bit of background.
You're talking about the one on the action item?
We have some Chad Horn here as well, so either, sorry, uh, Chad Horn is also here as well now.
Okay. Thank you, man.
Can I, may I ask a clarifying question?
Yep.
Before we, so maybe we speed this, the answer up. There's, uh, two budget transfers in the consent agenda. But then there's the first bullet under action item is also, um, budget adjustments. Um, which is a very large spreadsheet. So do you, are you kind of asking that question for all of those? Or are you just looking at the ones in the consent agenda right now?
Yes, I was asking for.
Okay, so if you could frame, so Jen and, and Carrie, uh, Carrie, probably if you take the action item, so when we get there, we'll be in good shape. But since it's all the same topic and Jen, maybe if you could say a few words about the student services and that would be probably the best.
So can you, yeah, okay. So Carrie, if it's okay, I'll go first, cause mine's fast.
Yes, go ahead.
To answer Charlie's question, these were actually contracted services last year. However, two years ago, when it was a default budget, they were not. And that's why we're having to move money out of other lines because of the default budget piece moving, changing the way that these were contracted. But they're not newly contracted this year. They were also contracted last year.
And then the second one there is for the purpose of out of district placement?
Yes.
Yep. And so then the action item conversation, which, you know, since we're just talking about money, minus Carrie, you can talk about the transfers and so forth, what's happening there.
So it ties similarly to what Jen said. Um, the large transfer is a result of operating on default budget, which was last year's adopted budget based on positions from two years ago. So there were staffing changes that happened last year and program changes. So it compounds the problem since the proposed budget didn't pass. So we have staffing changes in, in areas that we don't need the money in those budget lines. We need them in other budget lines. So a lot of it is just to shift money to where the people actually are and where the funding is needed in addition to what we have available to transfer right now from salaries and benefits to move to facilities and student services to help with their budget. That's also included in this.
And correct me if I'm wrong, just if, this is for clarification. I believe we said this at the finance committee, but I know we talked about it like several times and we have other board members here. The student services ninety-two thousand six hundred twenty-three and the twenty-six seven seven seven. But specifically the ninety-two thousand dollar one, that is separate from the action item and number seven, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, so, uh, thank you for that little bit of background. I, I realize that there's a lot here and, uh, probably the question that I asked is, uh, you know, may, maybe it's not that easy to answer, but thank you for the, the information you gave. Obviously, if this is a year when managing the budget is, uh, takes some, some real effort and creativity. So we're grateful to you both for the work you're doing on that. There ain't, anybody else have any other questions about these large budget transfers that? I, I always think that this is part of the, uh, school board work that can be a little bit murky, you know? I mean, it's a lot of numbers and it's hard to keep up with it all. It's interesting going through this list of transfers because you see the same line item so many times because it's coming from a different department, a different school, a different, uh, function. And, uh, I feel like we're fortunate to have Charlie who's, uh, put a lot of effort into understanding all of this a lot better than most of us. And, uh, it's a pretty important part of what we do. So we gotta kind of plow through it where we can. So uh, Jen and Carrie, thank you.
We have a motion in second.
Yes. So we have a motion in a second. And, uh, if there's no further discussion on this or any other items in the consent agenda, um, please signify by saying aye. Okay, thank you. So that motion passes six zero zero. Thank God for consent agendas, cover a lot there. Okay, action item. What's your adjustment for fiscal year twenty-three due to default budget? Again, now this is something we're just discussing, I
Yeah, I, I believe the total is, uh, one million four something, right, Carrie?
One four four four. Yeah, one, one million four hundred and forty-seven thousand one hundred and twenty dollars and sixty-six cents.
Basically, it's a, it's a net zero, so it's taking money out of lines and moving it into. So yes, that's correct.
One twenty sixty-six. Okay, this was reviewed by the finance committee. The finance committee does support it. And what it does is we were, at least I personally was having difficulty, um, reconciling a department budget because the line items we had populated were line items from the default budget. And we were actually planning on, because we eliminated positions, so we had the bottom line match, okay? So the default for the bottom line and the default of proposed match, but the line items didn't. So when you went to a department, the uh, bottom line on the department did not match. The bottom line of the department and the default budget and the bottom line of the proposed budget for a department, they didn't match. So Carrie went through all the effort to go through all these line items and make the corrections that were needed to move funding from one line item to another line item to make the default budget, uh, to make the proposed budget accurate relative to the funding that we had. Does that make any sense? Okay, so Carrie did an admirable job. The, uh, facilities committee supports it. And what I would like to do is make a motion to authorize Carrie to transfer uh, one million four hundred and forty-seven thousand one hundred and twenty dollars and sixty-six cents from, uh, multiple line items of multiple amounts to multiple line items with multiple amounts as outlined in the, um,
I'll second that.
Okay, thank you, Charlie and thank Paul. Anybody have any questions about all of this? All right, so here are no questions. All those in favor? Close. Okay. All right, thank you.
Thank you, Carrie.
Thank you, Gary.
Thank you.
All right, now we're on to purchasing guidelines, which we discussed. Last meeting. And. Does someone have an update for us?
So the, the, the petty cash for the athletics department, they're asking for it to go from. Three thousand dollars for CHS and one thousand dollars from JRMS. Heather's asking that be bumped up to six thousand dollars for CHS, three thousand dollars for JRMS. That wouldn't affect. The amount she spends, it's just about the effect, same amount she's able to spend at one given time. That was that, right?
It improves her cash flow a few times, it's very difficult. We have so many, you have to pay out so many checks and so forth and some of your things at one time. If you have a lot of games going on, then the the process to get it kind of reimbursed. And there's a constant time. That's the, that's the idea, just buys time.
All right, there, if there are no questions. We have a.
I'll make a motion to approve the adjustments. Presented.
The purchasing.
Yeah, the purchasing guidelines.
Thank you, Paul. I'll say, Charlie, seconds, thank you, Charlie. And there's no questions, then all those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Number both, none? Six zero zero, thank you. Okay, now on to our multi-year plan.
So this plan, and again, say thank you to Nick. The idea is to have a lot of our documents looking like. They are planned together, kind of, they they look similar, so he changed the formatting, made my charts a lot crisper. Than what I had, so you you would see that down below. Change in spacing and so forth, page numbers and everything. But the idea of this multi-year plan, the reason why we call it a multi-year plan rather than a three-year plan or a five-year plan or whatever. Is because the the whole concept of of shifting our. Organization over the past several years to be more nimble agile system is that. You build upon your strengths and when you get momentum, you go, you go with it. So it might not take five years to implement something, might take one or two other things. It might take longer to, but you're working toward it. There are certain aspects of this plan that should be going on for the next ten to fifteen years. Mostly the philosoph, the the belief system, the, you know, these charts here. The concept of trying to constantly become more aligned. And also, I believe, the decision-making structure of a school. I think we're entering and have actually been in, but certainly entering a different age of for public education and. Public education needs to be in a position to be able to have its. Its teachers and administrators and staff and students and families and so forth. All working together toward the betterment of what's going on and that's easier said than done, but there are certain. Structures or processes that the the district can have and place or put in place that can help that out. Obviously, communication, the work that we've done with communication over the past three or four years is just evidence of how things can adjust. And and really help the entire learning community. And we're just building, building and building on that. I didn't change any of the content, I didn't get any feedback or much from a standpoint of content anyway. Feedback, there was some stylistic things that were. Told me, told me, so we changed something about here and there, but. It's similar to what I've had shown before.
Sure.
And this is meant to be. More like, if you think of our COVID framework, well, talk about that. Frameworks where we were able to adjust and adapt and so forth as a good, I would say, think of this more as a framework. That we're going by and that we're going to at the very minimum update, you know, four times a year with the goals committee. But also, if we go down. Or scroll up in space, which sends us down in the numbers pages. You know, there are recommended locations that we have conversations about, for instance. PLCs will report out on a regular basis at the education committee. MTSSD is already being reported out at the education committee, the learning management system. Clearly, the education committee is going to be focused on those things. Now, some of those. Can be packaged altogether because your learning management system should be utilized within your PLCs and using the data to inform instruction and so forth. Nonetheless, it's got to be on the forefront of our conversations as we go forward. So there's some things that are finance, some things that are facilities, some things that are multiple levels. And certainly anything in spare game of school.
I think it is past one, Nick, that on, where it's supposed to say where it is, it just says goal one, two, I think it was like copy and paste it. So it doesn't say what it's supposed to be with, I don't know if that matters, but it was just the one state. I don't, I don't think, I don't know if, is that set the one bright, that's the education right now, is that whole column for where, where it's supposed to be? Like, is that what we did? Are you talking about?
Safety planning, you have it in the wrong column.
No, I I think what you're saying is we forgot to put the headings on top of each page.
Oh, well, there's that, but, yeah, no, he, he, he's right. It's on the safety planning, it says goal one four, and then where it's supposed to say.
Page fourteen.
I don't think it, I don't know if it really matters, but I didn't know if this was a final draft or anything.
Okay, yeah, so we'll adjust that, we'll change that and also we need to find a way to, no, I have to split up in different time. I remember this is Charlie's suggestion from last time, I couldn't remember. The headings on every page.
Okay.
So that we know that this is the activity, this is the goal, this is the board committee. You know, the rating, so with those things, we can make some adjustments. The, this is not to ever be static, it's to be a a goal, so changing it now, it's, it's no, it's not, not an issue. But we will want to update it on a regular basis. We might take away things that, you know, are proving to not be effective at some point in time. Most of you, I can't imagine being taken away, but we might add some other elements. For instance, I don't have tutor dot com on here. Now, it's embedded into some other areas, but maybe in the next iteration, that's on there. I have, will have monthly data reports from them. As to what are usages and what people are using it for. And so there will be very easy reporting that will take place.
So. In terms of future, what? I I got to the strength there to the portion here of. That the graduates will need to face the future. Self-assured, self-directed, connected partner and so forth. The last one is a productive, productive contributor. I I didn't see anything in here around career, around higher education, the university college. You know, the things that students do after. So I don't know whether that was intentional or whether it's. I see that that everything's in there to get them there.
Yeah.
Okay, but I don't see that we mentioned that that's one of our goals to get them, so.
All right, so we'll take that back, try to think of that. What what comes out of this is. The schools have to develop action plans that are more specific in nature than these. And there's some, I can tell you, there's some significant work being done on that right there, so. I'll touch base with the high school, middle school, see if there's anything more specific that can be added into the district wide one. But you will see that within school, okay, wide ones, yeah.
Thank you, Charlie. And Ruben, thank you for for this. I'm sure that a lot more of us have had a chance to at least browse through it. Since last meeting and. Though you didn't get a lot of comments, in the meantime, we appreciate all the the effort and. Obviously, this is what we're all working towards. Like, there's so many different little goals that we have, whether it's around our budget or our facilities or playing fields and sports. But I mean, this is. So. All right, so anybody else have any other questions at this?
So from a financial perspective, I would say if it ain't in here, don't get funded.
Well, now, Charlie. The good news is we'll be able to keep on changing this up and adding it and all that kind of stuff, so.
It's live.
The living, breathing document that can be adjusted.
That, but in reality, this is where the focus should be.
Yeah, well, these are these, yeah, focus areas. Fortunately, some of the safety stuff, we've been getting some grant funds. Hopefully, we can get some other funds for some of these educational elements, you know. But there are pockets in there about wellness, food. And activities and things of that nature and in order to keep on growing that and so forth, we do have to have the right types of facilities. So we don't get overly specific with facilities in here, right? I I think that that's actually in the strategic design that we're going to be. Evilizing, you know, we're going to have the proper facilities. Never says you're going to have the Taj Mahal of facility, but you got to have. The right stuff to be able to do the work you need to do, and I think that's what we're trying to focus on, is naturally have the right stuff.
Well, a lot of this stuff, like you said, can't happen, although.
Yeah, facility, that's right.
I mean, I don't see anything in here about busing, but you got to have it.
Right.
State requires it, number one, but besides that, you know, people, if kids can't get to school, how they didn't want it.
Right, although if down the road, down the road, get it, or anyway, it doesn't matter, buses are on the road.
That was great.
It's a, it's a. If, for instance, we were having difficulties, however, to say a year or two from now, we're like, hey, this is something that's really not working out here. With transportation. You could have the conversation about, well, to, would, is it better to have your own buses? By the way, that conversation is probably not, but nonetheless, you would still have conversations about them at that point in time.
This is still needs transportation.
So you still need transportation, you have to find it in different ways, right?
So this describes it. Adequately excellent.
If you talk to. And and I would say without the state properly funding it inadequately. Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah. All right. So, and those conversations are going on in real time about. Minimum standards and obviously there's a lawsuit and so forth, and that's continuing on, so lots of, lots of things happening for the state of New Hampshire.
Right. They're very important, serious stuff, people thinking on both sides of all of these issues. We need a motion on this. On part of the school board. It is an action.
Motion to what?
Motion to accept, motion to accept the multi-year plan.
Oh, I make a motion to accept.
Well, then, you just say you were gonna adjust it again? Okay.
I didn't hear what you said.
Didn't you say you were gonna change a couple of things on there too?
Well, you can just, I approve it with the recommended changes.
We're going.
Yeah.
So it's kind of like a framework, it will be adjusted and changed.
Because it'll be reviewed multiple times a year. You know, committee might say we'd like to adjust this and if we need to adjust it, we can bring it to the board and say we'd like to adjust this and then you just change it.
Like reopening time?
Well, yeah, I would, again, I consider it as a framework. Yeah.
So as you read it, we are meeting, we decided to meet a little more often than quarterly, so we're meeting in October. And so as you're reading it, please email us the, any things that you, you know, boy, I really think this should be. Please do that so you can be informed.
And so we don't forget to, like the tutoring thing, I don't remember, but that.
Yeah. Well, and we, it it might just be fitting it into something that's already there, but still, it's a, should be matched. It's got to be purposeful and intentional, like you said, people need to know about these sorts of things, so.
Okay, so we have a motion from Kim.
I'll second.
Okay, thank Christine. Uh, any discussions further? Let's say all those in favor.
Hi.
Hi. Okay, so that carries six zero zero. Okay, great, and then we're on to item number eight, policy approval.
So last time, when we talked about KFR, today is the second reading, I did not submit a edit. I really felt like we're going, let's have this conversation a little bit longer, so if we could scroll down to page two. And stop at fees and payment, this was where we had talked a lot about, are we charging scouts? Are we charging the, right now, this policy says we will charge the fees noted at the bottom. To priority five and six, and we had a lot of conversation about, are we going to charge Jaffa Ridge nonprofit and youth organizations? It was a long conversation, I felt like it was, I, we didn't vote on it, we didn't, we just kind of said, in understanding that we didn't want to. But I guess I wanted to just revisit it, make sure that we want to remove that piece of charging. And I know we want to charge automatically six and they can come back to the board for discussion, like they can, they can appeal that with the board. Do we want to remove number priority five? So. It says five and six, then if you scroll down, scroll up to page one, please, Nick. This is the priorities, so what we discussed was removing the priority five from the automatic fees. Where's people's, where's people's thoughts? Didn't we already send a letter to the scouts of focus?
We already waived the scouts for this year.
For this year.
What Lisa was asking is rather than having priority five come to the board. Every single time and sending a letter out to the scouts or this group over here or this group over here or this civic organization. Do we, and picking and choosing perhaps, do you want priority five to be like. Priority one, two, three and four, or do you want it to be like priority six? Which people have more or less agreed that the for-profit entities would be charged.
Charlie?
I have changed my mind. I believe that we should retain five and six. And because the number of variances that we would have to offer. It's not that great. And the number of nonprofits in the town of Ring is super high.
Just staying in the same name.
I mean, we've got. Fundraisers, we've got all kinds of people who are nonprofits. And rather than saying you can use it, but I'd like to determine whether or not we wouldn't. The board as a whole would like to authorize them or not authorize them. That's my.
I had the same exact conversation, and we talk so much about the kids organizations, we want to support them. I almost thought of saying, how about if we put the words youth organization up into JRC SD support groups, PTO boosters. And nonprofit youth organizations, like I. And nonprofit youth organizations, like I, I don't wanna mess with the family stuff. But I thought the same thing, like there's a heck of a lot of nonprofits. What they're using this place for.
There's also not a lot, not a lot of nonprofit youth organizations.
That aren't already in that.
And use the Rexton's facilities and stuff like that.
So you're saying you should stay the way it is right now?
That's my.
That's your, your input?
My input, yes.
And that just, they just, it just comes to us if there's any further approval needed, right?
Okay, now, also remember, if you wouldn't mind scrolling down to page four, Nick. Also remember that what this is, is a substantial increase from the current. Fees that we agreed to last November. This is the increase, or what we have now is twenty-five bucks. For everyone. Yeah, it's, so this is, this was a lot of work that John put in. John McClair put in to, to really say, this is what this place is worth, minimum.
I really liked, this is aside from, as I mentioned, you saw, some of you saw today. And the facilities community, I really liked the system they showed about. They do a work order, this is the number of hours it took, this is what they're. Charging, you know, this is what it costs the, the district to do that, plus here's the cost for the, um, supplies and so forth. I think that'll be very beneficial a year or two down the road for our own budgeting processes and record keeping, but. You know, it, it goes to show that the tool he was using to help come up with a lot of this information. That's something that's happening right now is the implementation of a new system for facilities. To just get things in order.
The other piece to this is important that this says unequivocally that we do not. Allow use of our materials. And I know that there was a group that wanted to. Come in and use our materials. Basketball's, sports equipment, those kind of things for their, for their programming, and this very clearly says that's not allowed. Now, that piece has been in there all along. And we've never, it's never been. Things, but the reason for a policy this stringent is that we follow it. So my request would be that we, to the school, is that. When they, we okay, that kind of a thing, that they come before the board and say, we wanna use this, we'd like an appeal to that portion, I'd like this to be. Actually followed, you know, so I don't want it to be. Now that's in here, if we don't hold by it, then let's take it out, that's what I said.
And if they're using them, if, if, if they're using them up, or if they're using them and they ruin them, then it comes back to a school's budget to replace them. So it does make sense to. Saying no.
Every use of our materials depreciates it, you know, that's, it's not that it's a bad organization, that's a bad thing to do, it's just, we're not gonna depreciation.
Uh, question I have. In light of the idea of keeping. Fee and payment system. Charged to priority five and six. Should we put a note, a mention in there that, uh. Members of priority five can appeal to the. School board for a waiver of those fees.
My recommendation would be to not, because that's already stated in here, and anybody can. So the nonprofits can, can definitely.
It's, it's already in there.
Yeah.
Where, where is that?
Previous one had it, I mean, give me a second. Alright, the previous one had it, this one does not. But the original that we currently have.
I, I think that Charlie makes a good point, uh, about, you know, there've been just so many not-for-profits and. On, on the other hand, if you have groups like the Boy Scouts, or, and it's lots of other youth groups in general. Rather than them having, you know, to read this and say, oh, we can't afford that, we're, we're gonna go somewhere else. Seems like it would be worthwhile, though, that they can.
Priority determination, they said. Right under priority, under priority six.
Yeah.
So, so you're saying where it says, any requests not.
Okay, so we add language for an appeal. Perfectly, but yeah, absolutely, let's do that, because we've been talking about that all along, I thought that was right there. Alright, so let's edit. Priority five specifically. To say. Organizations are invited to, um, to apply for a waiver.
Or, or they're eligible to.
Are eligible to. Uh, apply for a waiver, um, through the school board.
Or should may.
What, what are we doing now? Where are we at in what?
She wants to add something on line five or priority five, saying that they are eligible to apply for a waiver, because it doesn't specify waiver. Or appeals in here at all.
Okay, the thing is, is that, if you, uh, are we in the same place? I'm looking at priority determination, that just determines who, the pecking order for people. To have access of use. The, I think we're down here under, um, fees and payments. Well, we should put in a. Waiver.
I regret with the underlined.
Yeah.
We could also just add a, uh, sub-ethics waivers. Somewhere, just uses that language that you guys just talked about.
Just put a hyperlink in there so they can click on it, and get them to a waiver spot.
Or we could just put a, um. A single sentence in there that says fees can be waived by the school board.
So right after where it says prior, at the top, priority five and six group period. Fees can be waived by the school board. Specific spaces also have a base fee, that's alright? Okay, as long as people actually read, you know. Because I'm a selfish person, I'm thinking about like the, and then not. You baseball programs and that they use R M S. Baseball field. Wow, great, so will they know to look all the way through the policy or suddenly see that every time they use the baseball? Field that's gonna cost them fifty dollars and just throw their hands up and discuss. I think they have a longstanding relationship with somebody that would say, go to the school board. They, they have a longstanding, I mean, most of the.
That, that specific group has actually also paid for. The soil and other things to be put in a certain space, so they can use it and it can be, uh, suitable for flood. Right, so I think that there's been a. Partnership, and, and perhaps what we need to do is we need to get some M O As with certain groups like that, that says. You know, we waive on speeds, you keep up this, you know, that sort of thing, that, that, that's probably the better way to go about doing things. And. And those before for official signatures and so forth. I haven't seen them for a while, come a little up, but I don't know.
And we'll find a contact on the actual page, but they, uh, because we're already educating people on this new process to, you know. Reserve space anyway, we're already shifting that practice, and as a part of this, uh, if you go to. The lake on the website that shows the big process, if they have questions, they can reach out. So the part of this, uh, request. You know, we're, we're showing them how to log in, how to set up their new account. And if they have questions beyond that, they have a point of contact. And how, how the original request came to the school board, was they contacted the facilities department, said, oh, hey, this is a change that I'm not used to. What is my avenue for appealing? Facilities have connected that, uh, you know, school board, so that you guys can refer to that request, so it, it. It's worked into the new system in which people have a point of contact if they have questions, and that they, they'll know some of these other, uh. Points, uh, as they're actually, you know, going through this stuff of, uh, applying for space, so.
So I, I don't remember, so when you're going through there, it's all digital, you sign up, say, hey, I wanna book the basketball court. Or the gymnasium for this block of time. And it tells you, okay, hey, this is your hourly rate, is there a box in there that they can just click, hey, submit for a waiver? Just so it automatically gets submitted for a waiver?
I could have that discussion with the facilities department.
Does it, that would save a lot of like back and forth time and.
Yeah, I mean, it could be a possibility, if that was something that you guys wanted to investigate, I, I didn't set up the system at all, that was. So these things, so if that was something that's desirable, he could. Yeah, I know they have some. Level of customization, I don't know how.
Right.
No, they might be able to develop a front-end form, that's a quick, yeah, like a waiver request.
Yeah, I would rather that than a Google button, just because I'm.
We do that for, yeah, we do that for a few other things, so we have. Um, a page, I mean. You, can you bring that up, the page where they have the forms, guys can go to forms for different, like, types of. I'm thinking, there's a library, right, one that they have up there, other forums that, um. Parents can submit.
I mean, I'll go to this one just real quickly, just because it's right here, just in the staff.
Staff forums, that's fine, but. And my point is we can create some.
Every single one of these is now a fillable front-end form, but it's traditional round across that, and it's had the presentation on that. And this is all we have left on staff forms that has to be converted, uh, but then also if you go to. Forums, and then there's also individual links on each school page, these are all. Not all of these, I haven't had the chance to separate them out, but some of these, you know, for example, this instrument learner. Uh, voter contract, either teacher can set up this form and it routes, so the kids can read, uh. So, we could always. Have a form created that still routes accordingly, and then we could just add to that, uh, webpage, a section that just says like. People of this category can submit a waiver, if you're interested, use this form, and help that way, so.
Good work.
So I would like to make a motion that we approve policy K F dash R. As edited, and for the transcript, the edit would be that on page. On page with the fees, give me one second. Um, on page two of the policy, under fees and payment, first paragraph. After the second sentence, saying events sponsored by priority five or six group. The next sentence becomes, requests for a fee waiver must be approved by the school board.
Can I ask a question? Does it make sense to go there or after the. Specific spaces also have a base fee for that. I was thinking, like, get all the money talk. And then afterwards, that sentence. Where? It's at the end of the paragraph.
At the end of the paragraph, and, and. I kinda like it right after priority five and six, because you're seeing right away, priority five can get away. I guess that's the way I would think it's there.
Either place is fine, then.
I'll second it.
Well, uh, like you said. What is the other?
After group, afterward group, it, the sentence is, requests for a fee waiver must be approved by the school board.
Okay. Okay, so then. We have a motion to edit or a motion to approve as.
Motion to approve as edited.
As it, okay.
I'll second that. Paul's second.
Okay, so all those in favor?
Next policy, I have no edits on.
Very good. Exit interviews, G's, G C Q B. Is there any discussion? Okay, so I see no discussion.
What did we change on this one, what, what happened?
It's just the second viewing.
Oh.
Is there a, uh, attachment?
Um, that's for H R, so that's the procedures part of this, that we don't really deal with, this is, and H R has a survey. Um, so. That was.
Do you want that attached to this, or do you want that last part removed?
I don't see a reason to not attach, uh, copy of it, it's fine to do so. So that people see that there is a process. The question is, do we make that, what's the, um, lettering on this one?
G C Q B?
Do we make it G C Q B, no, this is G C Q R. Oh, right, there we go, yeah, so we put the R on top of that sheet. So, we just have to talk to Wesley about. Like, it's a, it's a front-end form. So. Or at least send it to a location before we can go, so what are we gonna do?
We, we are approving this policy. Interview policy. There is a piece of it that we don't normally include in policies where there is procedure attached, which is the survey. That really has. Only, it's important, but it's not relative to our approving the policy. It's simply an addendum that, that H R and the superintendent's office. Has in place currently and will attach to this as part of it, but we wanted to have a policy. Stating this is what our company's doing.
So the exit policy, the exit interview policy, the next line down will be. Eliminated.
The next line down would be a link to the policy, to a front-end form with the, with the, to the procedure.
Yeah, right there. The survey.
Put it down at the bottom.
So we try to avoid links, because when you change one thing, you gotta find everything that links to it. So my suggestion would be to make this G C Q B, and also then have a G C Q B dash R. So you've got the separate policy, uh, process. That's, that's part of the whole thing, but you can change the interview questions without changing the policy.
Yeah, we, we just, we change the format to match everything.
Yeah, that's, that's why I was.
Yeah, it's gonna take a little bit of work on the R, that's what I was trying to say, is that we'd have a G C Q B R. And then you just have to work and figure out how that would. Print out, which has a. Probably pretty easy, actually.
They could even be a one-line policy that says, very complex policy that says, uh, you know, here's only. Uh, it's interview, uh, survey, uh, if you need a paper copy, please reach out to the paycheck department. Yeah, my question is for this, are, are, today, are we approving just G C Q B? Or as a part of this, is the R policy?
We, we create those, but we create the procedure. And we're, we're just gonna share the procedure, so it's, but the policy does not exist, so we are approving a policy. Just be without the R.
Okay, so R is what?
So do we have to remove anything from the, as it sits right now? Because it has the C attached.
It says the attached in the bottom, does that have to leave? So what we, what's gonna be removed is the second line, exit interview survey and the last line.
Okay.
Given you have the motion to approve this, but with those changes.
Those are, as I mentioned.
Okay. So are you gonna make that motion?
I didn't know if anybody else had questions on it. I will make a motion to accept policy G C Q B as amended.
There be no further questions? All those in favor who signify by saying a. Hey, that says six zeros or. Okay, board committee updates.
Well, can say very quickly that the wellness committee. Meets Thursday, September twenty second, ten, three fifteen. However, I have a question. As I'm learning more about. The roles of committees. Um, the wellness committee has been meeting via Zoom. For this entire time, is that correct? Should we be having a physical meeting?
Yeah, I mean, based on legal guidance, uh, for committees, we should, we should be meeting regularly. Any meeting has to follow the same standards that we would follow for a school board meeting, which would be a properly focused, noticed meeting. Twenty-four hours in advance.
Is the wellness committee a board meeting? A boards, a board, it's official school board. Committee, no committee. No, it's not. It just has, uh. Two board members on it, but it's not a board committee.
It's, well, so.
What, what does that do?
What I, what I wanted to explain is Christine also reached out on solar thing. We still have these ideas about what needs to be.
Well, that's part of, that's a subset of the facilities.
But I've already reached out and got legal advice from the new parent school board association, described the intent of the committee, the membership. All of that, they've said, uh, their attorney has said that based on the law, RSA ninety-two, one A, right to know law. Those are still considered public bodies. And by that definition, properly noticed meeting twenty-four hours in advance. Physical in-person meeting, you could have people that are zoomed in, but you need to have a physical forum of your board members. Or of, and, and, and some of these committees where you have people that are outside of the board, they, they're considered part of the committee. So if you have five people or. Six on a solar, you'd be at least four majority. Uh, and then you can be generating minutes in accordance with the right to know policy, which includes time in and time out. Location, people there. Items discussed, any motions made. We, we've asked as things have evolved and changed, if there was, um, a point in time where during COVID, there was an additional ability to be to be a Zoom. That is now gone away. Uh, which is why, you know, we had that period in the school board where we were meeting more via Zoom. Now we're back to full in person, obviously just using that additional different component. But, um, any. Or committee should be generating.
So, so, yeah, I think you're, you're right, but I think that would apply to the subcommittee related to the solar project, but not to the wellness committee. It's the wellness committee really is a school committee. We're just serving out it. Really, as a courtesy.
And I could, I can ask on the wellness committee. I mean, again, like, the, the, if you think about the wellness committee and its functions. And you think about like the solar committee and its functions, if, if that is a committee. That still reports to the board. It has, uh, the access school board and non-school board members.
Well, I, actually, you're right. I think it, it might be though that the wellness committee should not be reporting at, at this. However. Uh, I also spoke to the school board attorney, uh, this week and. He has once again offered to come and meet with us on right to know laws or on anything else, but. Right to know, he's pointed out as one of the things that's. You know, most tricky and it's a useful thing for the school boards. To have a chance to ask questions and. The thing is, he would need an hour and a half, or at least would recommend if you do it quicker, but it feels like if we. Want to invite him, it probably makes sense. Put aside an hour and a half, including questions. So. No, no, that's included as a part of our membership, if I understand it. And is it considered time just for the board to meet with their attorney in a sense? Not a. That I don't know. I think it would be a public meeting because he's not technically our attorney. That's how I would understand it.
As they do offer. Right to know. Webinars. That anybody can attend. I don't know.
Yeah. No, you're right. And, and the, the webinars are a, uh, a useful thing and I think. We should all think about attending them. But having attended a bunch of webinars, it's, it's, uh, it's, it's useful, but it's not the same as. In your room with someone who's presenting to you and asking.
I would say it's, it'd be up to those members of the board who don't feel they know any, you know, know enough about our.
Being invited to string with working, he's been very responsive to her, you know, phone call. He's always happy to set up the time with me anytime before. Has a question or I've had a question, uh. I know that the, the school board association records those meetings. They've been setting them out this year, but I'm sure that if. Anybody wanted to get a back dated, maybe get that. As well, just it's different, you know, these were facilities.
Yeah. And, uh, yeah. Good, well. Ask folks to give some thought to that. I know the time is precious and everything. We're already at nine o'clock and it, it talked, we started at six. And this is his first meeting of the day. I have a fair number of itself, but. The, uh, as, as Nick just pointed out, uh, we're, 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 we're very thoughtful, very responsive, very friendly guy. Lives close by, so he was mine. And he'd be willing to come in if we want to do that sometime, so. Seems like a good moment to point that out to the board. All right. Oh, and there are, you're, in addition to ninety-one A, there's this new. Uh, requirement related to, um. Public participation, which is separate and. You know, there were some issues there that are undefined. Uh, I actually called him because I was curious about that. Uh, new requirement that's in law. And he basically said, you know, we, we don't know those, there's a number of things relating to interpretation that will be determined in the courts. We're just. Worries to know the answer to how.
That's usually what happens is. Legislature passes stuff that's vague and then the courts end up deciding what they really meant. Right?
Yep.
All right, so.
Well, I lost my agenda.
We're still updating.
Oh, updating on, uh. Many updates.
Yeah, I can do education, um. We did discuss the J F A V. Again, and, uh, looking, uh, on the tuition stuff, I think what we had looked at was. The added district tuition now and raise people are looking at pros and cons. And then we were just talking, I guess it's still kind of gonna be an ongoing topic. Um, getting more kids here and being more of a magnet school. This makes it, um, our. Improvements a lot more important. And so that was a topic we had discussed. And then some schools are lowering to six to seven thousand. Right around there and student board. Oh, and then we also discussed the student board members will be voted in within the next few weeks, which we just did. I just wanted to say that. Because I wrote it down, but that already happened, right? So I know be here. And what else did we do? We did the NEAS report. We went over, um. There are a few areas that needed improvement for accreditation. Um, but I mean, it was all, it was all, there were. The, the parts that did need improvement were parts that everybody knew would need it. And so it's nothing of surprise, uh, the plan is, so let me just see if I have any notes on that first. The plan is set in place and David feels he has a goal strategy in place to move into the next. To the met range. So where we weren't quite met. David felt comfortable that we will soon be in the met category of that. Okay, I have no idea. What those non-mets were. It was a slideshow.
There was definitely one in making sure that they had consistency with the curriculum documents that you're working on that.
It was page thirty-three.
That was the big one.
Okay.
But I think there were three areas, maybe.
Four priority areas needing immediate attention. Others will be when we get there and they're not, um. As important. Hmm.
I've been given that document to post online, so I'd be happy to give the, the ASR report to the board numbers as well, in addition to actually getting that committee.
It's long, but there's quick pieces that help you. Yeah. Does it?
All right, back to Kim. Great.
So the finance committee met on the fifteenth. Um, you saw a lot of the things that we did discuss in there about, um, our shortcomings in the special education. And the facilities, uh, is a little on the. The negative side right now. That's why Carrie has done a great job with that Excel sheet that she sent us for all the budget transfers. We also talked about the. Uh, athletic petty cash, what we already voted on. And then we also talked about the out of state, uh, not out of state, out of district tuition. Um, Carrie did a great job putting together an Excel spreadsheet for that as well, where she broke down how much it costs per pupil. Uh, with everything included, transportation, teachers, everything. And she brought, brought it down to what it would actually cost the schools to. Um. To add a, a, an additional, um, pupil per grade level or per, per school. Elementary school, middle school, high school. So then we cost average. We did a cost average and we're proposing. Um, to the education committee, uh. What the actual cost per pupil will be, we're, we're thinking eight thousand dollars per pupil. Um, and then that would also. They would also be able to apply for the Freedom Account. Um, which would give them. What was it? Uh, thirty-seven or thirty-eight hundred dollars of relief.
Because forty-six hundred.
Forty-six hundred, yeah, so they'd be, be able to apply for that.
The voucher, you mean?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So the cost would be eight thousand, but if they received the freedom.
It would be deducted from that.
Okay, so it would be. Okay.
Um. Yeah, so that was pretty much. The finance committee for this week.
Thank you.
Then we did the facilities today. Do you want, did you want to take care of that or? Uh, so we had the facilities meeting this morning. Um. And we had a, I don't remember his name. Mark Tiger came out, um, to recommend what we could possibly sell the Route two O two land for. Uh, the Jaffa range land that we have. Um, he said that he would recommend listing it at three hundred and fifty thousand. Um, if we decided to go that avenue. He said this would be a good time, just the way that everything's going right now in the real estate market. Um. Then we also, we got updates for the HVAC systems, uh. They're currently having issues with multiple, uh, multiple motors have failed. Um, all of which are right here in the middle high school area. Uh, luckily, motor. Oh, the motor five, motor five is the Pratt, um. And instead of replacing that motor, we already have received the new one in, which was part of the HVAC updates. Uh, so John did a great job, um, swapping that up and he got them to expedite that one. And they're gonna put that one in on the twenty-fourth. Uh, and they said that it would take about a week or so. To get it fully functional. Um, so instead of repairing and costing us four to six thousand dollars, he's just gonna. Toss the new one in there, which, which is great. Unfortunately, we're not gonna be as successful with motor two. Uh, which is the upstairs downstairs for J R M S. Um, so we're gonna have to. Fix that one. And he said that would cost roughly four to six thousand dollars. Um. And then, um. We were able to sign multiple proposal or contracts for plowing propane trash. And then the tree harvesting one was also signed. Um. Oh, and the middle and high school were approved for the safe grant. Um, which was for all the, he's gonna be able to do doors and the magnetic locks and. That's great. Will keep everyone a lot safer. Yeah, John's got a lot of work on his hands.
He really does.
Yeah.
And that was, uh. Pretty great luck about that.
Yeah, yeah.
We, we know we're gonna have to fix it and spend all that money and. Uh, E E I looked in the warehouse and said, oh, it's here, so.
Yeah.
Change our schedule.
Fortunately, the other ones aren't, but.
Yeah.
We'll take one.
And there's one installed apparently in the middle school, which, uh, is having a.
That was motor one or, uh, more system one or whatever they called it.
And apparently it's changed the, uh, quality of air and the comfort level in the, in the building. Noticeable. Yeah, it's been tough to tell how it's handled the humidity because. By the time it got in there, some of the humid hot days were over with, but even depth, there's no question you can feel a difference in airflow. In those areas. It's significantly different.
Okay.
Well, thank you, Paul. That was great. Uh, what else do we have?
Uh, communication. Uh, we are waiting for one final member, um. As reminded, the previous committee agreed to certain structure for nine members. We now have eight of those nice slots still. We're just waiting for the last one. As soon as that person's in place, uh, it's a, one of the staff. Slots will, uh, get back going, hopefully be, uh, if we can get a. You know, this week could be, you know, maybe end of September, but definitely probably did. So we're seeing a little more realistic. Uh, we have, uh, two members. Uh, online with us right now, uh, that'd be Jen Horn, uh, and Heather D, uh, teacher over at R N S. Obviously, there's two of you here right now, or one of you, it's John and Daisy. Uh, that's myself. It's, uh, we have two parents. At, uh. The library in here, uh, middle high school. So we, those nine people will be, well, uh, first off, it's gonna be the website.
Okay. And, um. Okay, so. Thank you. Uh, are we ready for public comments then? Second session of public comments.
And I'll pop the, uh. Policy backup real quick. I don't think there's anybody new, um. There's not, so I won't re-explain the whole process. I'm just, okay, uh, people who are on right now have the ability to make a public comment. But if you, uh, follow all the stuff I said before.
Okay. So I guess if, uh, anybody who's online would like to make a comment, this is. This is the time.
I haven't seen anybody raise their hand or anything, so.
Okay. So then, what I'd like to closer, we'll go on to the board matters and we, uh. So then, what I'd like to closer, we'll go on to the board matters and we, uh, and have, um. If anybody raises their hand, we. We just talked then. Uh, and Nick, thank you for putting this up there. This is, uh, the agenda for the Bradley and Kidder Law Conference, which is coming up. Is that October? There is twelve. And it's at the Kuponey Conference Center. And, uh, just take a quick look at the agenda. This is held during the day. It actually starts, uh, eight o'clock in the morning is registration, I think. So it's a tough thing to go to, and especially if you're working, you know. Almost impossible. However, some of the sessions are very valuable and. If you find this, what we're doing rewarding and it's something that you would like to learn more about. These nine, is it nine sessions? Maybe more than that. They're run by a very professional group of, uh, trainers. And they're they're run in the, uh, a system where three or four of them are run. In the first morning session, another three or four run in the second morning session, and then three more run. Uh, after lunch. So what that means is you can. Go to several sessions. If there's two sessions you're interested in being told at the same time, you can only go to one, but you can then maybe catch it in the afternoon or in the second morning session. And, uh. You know, the people who give these sessions, they're not all the same, but by and large, they're 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 pretty knowledgeable and pretty effective presenters and. Some of the complexity of s- school law is really clarified in these sessions, so. Just want to mention or recommend it to those of you who have an interest in, uh. There is a cost, but I believe the district will pay for the reg- registration cost. You just have to, you know, get yourself there and, uh. You know, if you can do it, that's great. If you can't do it this year, you know, might be something possible for you next year. This, this one to make sure. It's out there. I go whenever I can. Um, I think it's very, very. Good because you get to choose. Now what session you go to and the sessions that you don't go to, you can get the materials from all the presentations. And it's all done by attorneys. There are separate law firms that participate in this. Uh, and you get great information and not only that, you're with other board members. Who are there and superintendents who are there and, uh, they're going to ask questions and you'll find that, uh. Even if you don't have that issue today, you may have that issue tomorrow. And they'll be prepared for it. So I found it, uh, very, very beneficial to for anyone who can attend. And, uh, the, uh. I don't, we just wanted to mention something we'd never used, but the, or participated in that I know of, but there is a delegate assembly. Uh, you may have seen an email come through your inbox. I know N H S B A does send a number of them at different times. But the delegate assembly is something that they do, uh, periodically. Oh, well, sorry, not periodic, once a year. Yeah, it's coming up on October first. As I say, to my knowledge, we've never really participated in it. But basically the delegate assembly offers N H S B A members, which include all of us, an opportunity to submit, discuss, debate. And ultimately vote on resolutions and statements of belief. And these resolutions are statements of belief guide the school board associations legislative advocacy efforts with the New Hampshire Legislature. And so, and then there's a little more, so. Again, just something to think about and, uh, you know, opportunities. I've always found that. Thing I learned, doing something like this, whether it's for a planning board or for a s- uh, a school board. Is is always valuable and often transferable to other. Other parts of, uh. Their life.
Are you going to the, uh, delegate assembly?
I am not planning to do that. I I I've taken on a couple of other things this, uh, fall that have got me busier than usual, so.
To believe what, uh, what happens and we have not participated very much in this. I think maybe my first year here. I think we sent some of the school board would typically choose an individual on the board to go, let's be fun here if you have. Got a bu- a bunch of resolutions that are, you know. On paper that people have put forward or districts have performed. Sometimes on charter schools, sometimes on, you know. A variety of topics.
And I think the process is.
It is to help with advocacy.
Yeah. And and I think I I noted that they say that if something is voted on, it's approved and it has a certain status in the school board associations. Policy agenda, but if it's approved three years in a row, then it becomes kind of an ongoing part of their. Their policy. All right. And, uh. We haven't heard of anybody looking to make a public comment. And so, uh.
I don't, hello, I don't have a board matter, but I have a. Board member child matter in that, uh, go to sentinel dot com. I think it is what is central source, you know, and vote for Ireland. Or, um, a coin for player of the week scored five goals. I think against Wilton.
Yes.
The other day.
Yeah.
Knocked a few players out of, uh, this news, but five goals.
Already voted.
Five goals, and I've already voted as well. So five goals is impressive. I mean, one goal is impressive, you know, three is a hat trick and five is, I don't know what that is. Is there a name for that?
No. So when?
But it's, it's an entire, you know, it's a couple. Somebody.
Yeah, one short of a touchdown.
That's a good way of looking at it. Nice. That's awesome.
Yeah.
Thank you for mentioning that. That's pretty cool.
No, it's very cool. Again, five, like you don't see that, you don't see that in the soccer arena.
No.
She's just mad because I think it was last year or the year before, her cousin was actually on the Wilton team. So now she's graduated, so she's not there this year.
So you're saying that she was mad because she wasn't able to like.
Yes, really, really just, yeah, put that one in there, drive home.
One in problem.
We're going to do one more motion.
I have a motion, make a motion lead. To adjourn.